...the Board of Selectmen's meeting minutes, discuss our host community agreement with American, sign up mutual aid agreement with three towns in the southeastern Massachusetts communities, discuss special town meeting warrant articles, and have the town administrators report. There's also some issues under Personnel Board and new business. Unfortunately, or fortunately, it's just the two of us tonight, so I'll be doing the meeting and Mr. Sadek will be doing the Personnel Board. So with no further ado, I'd like to call the Board of Health hearing for 11th County group.
I dropped a summary.
And just for the record, state your needs.
Kevin Bernato, three towns Board of Health.
Sir?
Chief Henshaw McGall, 11th County Road.
Do you want to take a seat up front?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Sure, that would make it much better.
Okay.
Let me just go through the summary.
Sure.
Okay, on five, six this year, I received a complaint regarding a camper or trailer being occupied. I inspected, I inspected the property, well, I tried to inspect the property, but I was denied at the time. I informed the owner, Mr. Dungala, of the violation, and I referenced the bylaw. On five, seven, I received a follow-up call from an individual, the individual who made the complaint. I informed them that I had visited the site and I had spoken to the owner. On five, eleven, a letter was sent to Mr. Dungala regarding the bylaw that was referenced, and our conversation during that inspection. Kind of, got kind of quiet then, I didn't hear anything else, until I received another complaint on eight, eleven, same thing, I received a complaint of a trailer being occupied. At this time, I was able to walk onto the property. I saw an extension cord leading to the trailer, a hose leading to the trailer. During that time, two individuals came out of the trailer. One had said that I had just woken them up, so it was my determination, seeing the hose, seeing the electrical cord, the person coming out saying they were sleeping there, it was my determination that it was being used as a residence. I, at that time, I ordered them to cease and desist, to remove the hose connection, electrical cord connection, and Mr. Dungala was cited, since he's the owner of the property, one hundred dollars. On nine, nine, I went back to verify. He also, at that time, had appealed for a hearing, so I went back to do a re-inspection. Mr. Dungala and I toured the property. He did say the two occupants were again in the trailer. I noticed that a new connection was, a new water connection and electric, of course, off to the other side of the house. At that time, it was determined that I felt it was, they were residing in there again. Another hundred dollar fine was issued, to be consistent with all the other properties that we deal with. And that's what we're here today. So we're only here today for the first one hundred dollar fine. I wanted to just make that clear, for the, on eight, eleven.
Sir?
Okay. Here's where I'm at. I allow them, in my home, I have a bedroom, is the mother, the son, and her, her better half, her boyfriend, whatever, to stay upstairs in my home. They have a trailer parked in the back, which they work on, they do different things. As Mr. Bernato said, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon, well, a guy had been out all night, yes, he probably was sleeping there, but there's no one living there. They're trying to get their trailer to Florida, and I, I let them stay there for that reason in the house, and they work on their trailer during the day, they do different things. Plus, they had a lot of other things from moving out of their former home, so I took sympathy on my friends, which I've known a good forty years, and, and this is where I stand. But no one is living or staying overnight in that trailer, and I swear on the Bible. That's my story. Mr. Bernato insists on not believing that, but I will say again, there is no one staying there overnight. If there is a tent outside where the son stays in the tent, he likes that, he's only sixteen, and he enjoys, for him, it's like camping, you know what I mean? And I don't know what more to say, but like I told Mr. Bernato, I did have some issues with tenants I had living upstairs, and they told me they're not going to pay me rent anymore, so they're very angry. I had to get a, a order on them, the fourteen day notice through New Bedford Sheriff's Department. So in turn, now they, this, that's really why this is happening. They were just angry, they said, "Let's give him a hard time as much as we can," and, you know.
Thank you. Paul, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. Do you have, you have a vacant apartment upstairs?
I do.
That you lease?
Yes.
Are these people paying you currently?
Now I have, it's vacant.
So in other words, the people that are staying in the trailer, you said they stay in your house?
They're not staying in the trailer, they're staying in my house.
They're staying in his house.
Upstairs?
Yes.
In the apartment upstairs?
They have my apartment upstairs, which is a large bedroom.
Do you have a signed lease agreement with them?
I do not, no. No, I'm letting them, I'm allowing them to stay there.
Are they paying to stay?
They are not.
So when are they going to be leaving?
I, I know, be very shortly, within the next month, you know. In fact, they're supposed to be here as witnesses, but I don't see them here yet.
So I mean, after you get the first citation, apparently you set up a little line.
Oh, there is a line going there, and there's also a water line. There, they have two dogs that are back there, that's how they're watered, through the water line. And then, as far as electric, if he does any work on his trailer, he needs the power and the light, so that's the main reason. Those lines, when they're not there, they're, they're disconnected, but it just so happened the day Mr. Bernato came, it was connected, and they were there doing things.
Have it twice, right? May I?
Oh, he came twice, yeah.
Yeah, oh, well, I came three times. On the first time, I was denied full access to the property.
Nobody, it wasn't me that denied you.
Yeah, we only walked on.
I never denied you going anywhere.
We only walked on a certain.
Okay, sir, can you let him just talk, and then we can go back to you?
We only walked on a certain amount of the property, and actually, we referenced the aesthetic system that we did, we had done right on the side of his house. And then, I lost my train of thought, I apologize.
You came, you went there three times.
Yeah, I went there three times, and each time, there was conditions where it showed that, looked like there was activity there. So that's when I made that determination.
Do you have any other questions?
Well, I guess, the main question is, you asked for a hearing, what are you expecting from the hearing?
Well, I wanted to tell my side of the story. There's nobody living there, and that, that's the bottom line, you know.
He's asking for, I think what you're asking for is your hundred dollar fine to be withdrawn.
Basically, yes, I am, because I, if nobody's living there.
Okay.
If I was wrong, I would pay it, but there's nobody living there.
Here's the thing, we have bylaws in town, and we have rules and regulations in which we all have to abide by.
True.
And we do that for the health and safety and welfare for you, and for the people that live around you. In no way, shape, or form should anybody be living in a trailer. It's just wrong, okay?
Okay.
So, and you know what, if it, sometimes, we make inferences, and, and we make our best judgments by those, because we have a health inspector who's gone there three times, who has seen water and electricity hooked up to a trailer.
Okay.
Okay? You can't have that. There's no reason to have that.
Well, how do they work on their trailer, then? This is my question, during the day, when they need the power there to do work for their trip to Florida.
But, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I'd like to state that we've been kind of having the same conversation for months now, that they're going to leave, they're going to leave, they're going to leave. And at each time, we, there's been a complaint, when I go there to visit, there's the water line again. But Mr. Dungala was ordered to cease and desist and remove the connection, which we did that first day. There was no need to put it back. He could have called us and said, "We want to work on things," but to put it back in a different location, in a hidden location, off to the side, because we have to actually find it, leading up to the, to the trailer again, just showed us that, it's not complying with Board of Health regulation.
No, Mr. Bernato, I did that so it won't be going through, straight toward the barn on, on my lawn, so I have to move it when I'm mowing, so I put it off to the side and buried the first half of it, so it'll be easier for me. When I'm mowing the lawn, I don't have to be moving the hose again, you know. Because there are two dogs back there, and they need water.
All right, the bill, the health inspector is asking you not to do that anymore, okay?
Okay.
We, we want you to abide by what his determination is, as far as, you cannot have that hooked up twenty-four hours, seven days a week, if you.
No, it isn't.
Okay. I'm just saying, you can't. That's all, okay? Paul?
I'll tell you what, what I feel, okay? He's been there three times, and you didn't know where he was going.
No, we absolutely not.
He didn't know where he was going, because he went as a result of complaints. So, in my opinion, I think the, the fact that you hooked something up after he disconnected it with you, as far as I'm concerned, your first hundred dollar fine stands. Now, you want to come back and you're going to talk about the second hundred dollar fine at some point. Well, you know what, my opinion, if the people are gone, the trailer is gone, then we could probably waive the second hundred dollar fine, but as far as I'm concerned, I think you need to pay the first one hundred dollar fine, and when those people get out of here, if it's before the time the next fine is due, we can look at it again. That's my opinion.
And I also think that if you're going to have people stay with you, and they're going to lease from you, then I think that you need to, to be safe for yourself and have a lease agreement with them. So then, that way, you can show the board that their leasing space upstairs, they're paying for it, and, and that's where, that's where it's at.
Well, yes, ma'am. The other tenants I had did have a lease agreement.
Right, we got that, and then they left, and.
And then they left, so that is vacant now.
You need to protect yourself, though.
Oh, I, I do.
And that's why you're here, right? Because you're the homeowner, and you're here, and they're doing something that they shouldn't be doing, but it's on your watch.
I know.
And right now, this is our watch, and we're saying, because Kevin's been there a couple of times, because he's told you not to do this, and because it has consistently happened, we have an obligation to uphold his determination, and with that being said, then I will entertain a motion to enforce the one hundred dollar fine, and then we'll wait for a further determination on the second fine at another hearing.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion to enforce the first hundred dollar fine.
And I'll second that.
Good one.
That was very appropriate.
Somebody liked the motion.
I can actually assist Mr. Dungala.
Okay, let, let's just finish with them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Kevin.
I can assist Mr. Dungala with the appealing again to the board, but then it'll have to fall in the same timeframe that the individuals leave, that will help them.
Okay.
Okay, so when you, you said a month, is that, they'd be out of here?
Exactly.
So, where are we at? Let's give them until the end of October. If they're out by then, we'll wear the second fee, the second fine. It'll all be done.
But you, but you, but you cannot keep this going. This has to stop.
Oh, I absolutely don't want to keep it going.
All right. So you can't have that hooked up twenty-four, seven, okay? All right.
I understand that.
Okay.
I do have one other question, if I may get. I received a statement to go to court in Fall River now, on October first. If I may show you the paper I received, if it's referring to this incident, I.
It is, now what's going to?
Okay, just let me get the paper and.
That's for the first one, right?
For the first one, yeah.
For the first one, yes.
Well, if he pays it.
He, he appealed, so they knew that the hearing was going to be now before the.
Okay, so he's all set, then?
Yeah, he would be that, now he's going to pay it.
Yes.
And that'll be, and that'll be.
Now he has to do it for the second citation. Now he has to appeal it.
Yeah, so once you pay.
And that's what I can assist them with, with Jackie, with town clerk, make sure that, for the second.
So this would, this one is referring also to this.
If you could, why don't you come down to the office Thursday, Wednesday, instead of tomorrow, we're going to a hearing, seminar tomorrow. Why don't you come down Wednesday, I can help you with that.
I will.
Okay. Thank you for your time, sir, and we're here just to protect you, okay?
How much time do I have now to pay this first one off?
We'll give you until the end of October.
End of October, okay. I just want to follow the laws and.
And we want you to, too, and we know that you're trying to do your best, again.
I am, I am.
I know you are.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Thank you, my pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Mr. Sadek and Mr.?
Eli.
Eli. And her I know, I'll give her the piss pump.
Thanks. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
See you later.
We're a little bit ahead for the six-thirty. I know everybody's anxious, but we have to wait till six-thirty. So with that being said, we have another guest in the audience that we'd like to take a, a look at, and that's to discuss the community host agreement with American. Would you come up, please?
Mr. Boyd, this is Tim Keo. Tim is the CEO of American.
Hi, Mr. Machiko.
Hi.
Hi, Tom Kilar.
Attorney.
Hi.
Hi.
Jackie?
Yes.
Hi, John.
So, we're, I'm a little caught off guard.
Sure.
But I wasn't really thinking that we're going to have a huge presentation today. I know that we're.
Don't want the suits tricking you, right? It's not that huge a presentation.
Yeah, you could have came in with jeans, it would have been fine. But I know that the town administrator has been working with your office and also with Attorney Kilar on a community host agreement, and without getting very specific, because we actually just got this on Friday.
Yep.
And haven't really had a lot of time to delve into it, so perhaps you can just give us a brief description about what you've both been working on, and.
Sure. I may, I'm here.
Okay.
The, the town has been working with Mr. Keo and Town Council on an agreement with regard to a fifty-two acre possibly industrial park. Most people will remember it as the Boston Beer Site. They're working with Campadelli Company and Kelly Engineering Group and have developed plans for installing a, a grow, this growing and processing facility for medical marijuana on the site. The initial phase, first year, would be about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty feet, square feet. I made it a hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and sixty by U-Plant, square feet of, of facility, and, and over the five years, first five years of the, of the existence of the facility, that that will grow to over nine hundred thousand square feet. We have been working on a host community agreement, and the board has a draft of that agreement. We've been working with an attorney, Joe Bard, with Popeye, Man and Page, on that agreement, and we provided you with the draft. And based on that draft, in addition to paying full boat taxes on the property, without limitation, in agreeing not to take any, or apply for any tax breaks, or even any agricultural exemptions, the prevent, this is all in the host community agreement, they will, in addition, pay the host community a fee of one dollar per square foot from the inception of the facility onward, every year, without end. And so there are some more details in the agreement, and we'll probably have another, a chance to discuss this once Lee is back, but we have a third selectman who's not with us. I've not met the attorney for American yet, and perhaps, is your name Tim as well?
Tom.
Tom, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Perhaps, Tom, you could tell us what your role has been in terms of this agreement?
In terms of the agreement, we really haven't played an active role. American, Tim Keo himself, I think, has been, been doing most of the negotiating on behalf of the company. We've taken a look at some of the proposed final language and made a couple of comments. Other than that, we haven't played an extensive role. We're going to be involved more in the site plan development for the, for the project.
Okay.
Tom's based in Fall River.
Do you want to just, because this is the first time I've met you.
Yeah, we can roll it back and.
Yeah, can you please do that for me?
Yeah, certainly.
And especially because we're, the cameras are here, and people might have some questions, so instead of getting everybody all anxious about it, if you could just talk a little bit about it.
Certainly. And I think that, that's kind of the idea of this format, you know, and it's the first that you've seen, if I figured, you know, why not, let's, let's get it out, let's talk about it, get some feedback.
You take it all the way back to Coastal Compassion and Fairhaven.
Well, so my, my background, I, I grew up in American, I lived in Mattel Poiseau. I recently relocated to Denver, Colorado, but I've been involved in the medical marijuana industry for about five years now. I started down in Rhode Island as an advocate, working with a nonprofit called the Rhode Island Patient Advocacy Coalition, advocating on behalf of patients' rights and safe access for medical marijuana. Through that process, I got involved in the Massachusetts application process and assisted a nonprofit called Coastal Compassion through the application process, and we secured one of the fifteen currently licensed medical marijuana dispensers. About a year and a half ago, I was recruited by a company out of Colorado, American, who is designing and building infrastructure for the medical marijuana industry. We identified this parcel of land in November of 2014, and we put it on our contract in January of 2015, as one of a, you know, a very unique site in that it is one of a parcel within the town that's been zoned and approved for a medical marijuana or an RMD facility. And that was done by a vote in June of 2013, and I think it passed by over sixty percent, which was very, a lot of foresight in that, in that, you know, recognizing that you needed to set a zone and identify the parcel of land where this activity, you know, the town was comfortable with it happening. It just so happened to be on a fifty-two acre parcel of land. So we went through, and we've gone through a number of design durations on the parcel to identify a developable footprint that works with our model, which is a greenhouse, sustainable cultivation and processing infrastructure. There will be no dispensary activity that happens on the parcel. We will have shipments of materials coming in, and there will be dry cured medicine leading the facility and going to area dispensaries. So within the town, there'll be no, and within the park, excuse me, within this parcel, there'll be no dispensing. Through this process, and what we've found is that working through what we call a host community agreement is a good way to establish a relationship between our project and the town that we bring it to, whether that's in our project in Colorado or in Illinois. We're currently working with groups in Maryland, using the same model and rolling out the same program, that establishes, you know, the roles and relationships between American as the landlord and the town, to help the town offset any potential impact that this project may, or, or may be perceived to have on the town. And what we've done is put together an agreement that spells out, you know, for every, every square foot of infrastructure that we put onto that parcel, in a quarterly installment or an annual basis, we'll pay one dollar. So under, you know, our phase one project is currently a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, that would be a, a payment to the town of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. As demand dictates, and as our partners request, we will add infrastructure onto the parcel, you know, over the coming years, and that will then increase the, the fee to the town.
How many phases of the project do you see? Or is that going to be based upon need and productivity?
Well, so we have two separate buildings that we'll be building. The way the regulations work, this would provide space for two licensed registered marijuana dispensaries in the state. Their dispensaries would need to be in another area outside of, outside of this parcel, but they could be anywhere in the state. They could be in Boston, it could be Worcester, could be down here on the south coast, so, but we have two space, two spaces. One has a buildable footprint of approximately five hundred thousand square feet, the second building would have a buildable footprint of approximately four hundred thousand square feet, and we're working on, you know, adjusting the site plan for parking, setbacks and things like that, but that's, that's essentially where it's at now. It's not quite refined and quite ready, this is a very rough, rough sketch of, of the concept.
So you're, you don't have your engineering plans or anything like that ready yet?
We're finalized, so I'm heading up tomorrow, I'll go up and meet with our architects and engineers, and we're moving forward, hopefully, to have something in front of the planning board in October.
Okay, so would you need the host agreement prior to your meeting with the planning board, is that the way?
Not necessarily, but with a project of this size, obviously, we have a lot of moving parts, and.
Right.
For me, the more I can kind of, you know, get organized and take off the to-do list, the easier it is, and the clearer it is, I think, for the planning board and other discussions that we may have with you regarding the groups that would need to come in. The way that this would work is, American would design and develop the infrastructure, they would build it, and we would lease it to licensed groups here in the state. They would need to, the licensed RMDs would need to come present themselves to the board and request a letter of support for submittal to the state, so the state will then review that and then issue a certificate.
Do you have any questions, Paul?
What is your timeframe to get started up there?
We are currently scheduled to close December twenty-ninth, so between now and then, we're going to work through site plan, with site plan approval, and start working on our building permits to get those in. We'd like to get that finalized, ideally before closing at the end of December, but realistically, in January, and then, you know, we're doing our best weather dance to make sure that we don't have a repeat of last winter.
Is that an expedited permitting area? I believe it might be, and I think it's something that you should look into.
It is expedited.
I, I think the, I think the Boston Beer might have been an expedited, expedited permitting, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
We'll definitely look into that.
But definitely look into that.
They've been to the planning board once, and they're scheduled to go back again for site plan review shortly, right?
No, we have not been to the planning board yet.
Oh, you haven't?
No.
Okay. What permit did he get? Did he get?
None.
None.
No, he's just saying that in the, he's working towards that goal. So, yeah, I would check with Lauren from the planning board to see if that is.
Okay.
Okay.
Mel, you're the attorney, the local attorney that's representing?
Correct. Yes. Offices at three fifteen off Main Street in Fall River.
You guys got COTS?
I can have.
That's in my bag, okay.
So it sounds like if all goes well, really, next, next year?
We'd like to begin construction in the first quarter of next year, and it's going to be weather depending, it's going to be a lot of site work, you know, the property needs a lot of earth.
Right.
Site development work, so it's going to depend on the weather, but as soon as we get the, the first window, we'd like to get moving on this.
All right.
As quickly as possible.
We, like I said, we just got this on Friday afternoon, so I really haven't, I mean, I wrote down notes on it, but I haven't really had an opportunity to delve into it, and I, I'd like to do that, and also discuss with our attorneys, Joel Bard and Mike Rich, and yourself, to see exactly what, you know, more about what's going on, so. Do you have any other questions, Paul?
No, I mean, we have, we just got this, and we're looking over, and we have another selectman that. We have another selectman that, if he'll be back in the next meeting.
I really appreciate you taking the time to come down. I know it's short notice, but I do appreciate it. And it's good to put a face to the company.
Yeah, no, thank you, and thank you for, you know, taking the time to...
No problem.
Making the short list to go through it. You know, we're available. We'd love to sit down and continue the conversation. We're, yeah, we're very genuine about moving forward with it.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have your COTs? Right on the money.
I think we should just take a 10, 15, 20-minute break right now. What do you think? No? All right. Right now, I'd like to, it's 6:30, and we need to sign a change of status form for John Pena for a pot-time reserve officer, submitted by Chief Abbott, effective September 21st, 2015. Thank you. Carlton?
Well, we have a good man here with us tonight. He served as an auxiliary police officer and was elevated to special police officer status. He successfully completed the field training program and exceeded 400 hours there. He completed the Reserve Intermittent Academy before joining us as an auxiliary. He's matriculated at Bridgewater State University, and at this point in time, has the equivalent of an associate's degree in criminal justice. And he's going to make an excellent member of our team.
The commotion to appoint John?
And I'll second that. With this being said, you are a fine young man. I've known you for a very long time, and your family is an awesome family. And I am so grateful to have you as part of our police officer in our police department. I'm looking forward to this. You're very welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it?
I don't know, we can all stand.
Last question.
Our town cleric will render the oath of office to John.
Come on up.
And after that, John has chosen, I believe, his mom to do the badge painting. Get some pictures as well.
Okay, if you're ready to write in. Do you, John Pena III, solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent on you as a reserve police officer, according to the best of your abilities and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Town of Free Town, the Constitution, and the Commonwealth and the Town of Free Town. So help you God.
All right. Congratulations. Can you go over there and draw the picture?
I don't have a camera.
John, leave a picture of that.
I have videotape.
So if mom would like to come over and lead over to the side, we can get some photos as well.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. You're going to make her cry. Oh, what about one with both of you? We are now. Oh, no, thank you. Got to be colored. Oh, I have some. Wait, did I get them in?
What's that over there? Congratulations.
I don't get to shut it off, I won't stop.
Maybe I, maybe I didn't say it in. Oh, okay, I read it.
Yes, that was me. I just drove back from CMAS, I had to hold the door shut. The door won't latch anymore. So you want me to shut it off?
Yep.
Me coming down North Avenue in Rochester, 16 miles now, and pulling one door. Every time I take a corner this way, it's like, oh! Door starts opening.
It's petitioning for your truck, is that it?
It's not the town truck, that's...
Oh, this is a...
Peter Borges is there.
We all back? Back in action?
Hey, Kim. Who are you?
Good to have you here. Oh, Kim, I didn't see you back there.
I'm Heidi.
She just got here.
All right. Okay. Approve ambulance abatements for the month of August 2015 as submitted by prior chief Carrie Sylvia in the amount of $40,074.54. I'll second that. All in favor? Approve abatements for months of November 2013, December 2013, January 2014, February 2014, and March 2014, in the amount of $32,732.64. But I have a question. How are these coming up so late now? Is this what's residual? Or, because usually we do abatements right, like almost...
I think those are the amount that they have tried to collect that weren't covered by...
By our previous abatements?
Correct. And I think they try to give them at least 18 months in order to get collected.
Because I don't ever remember doing them this far back like this. So I was just not wondering if it was a new procedure, if you're catching things that maybe weren't caught before.
No, I mean, actually, it's based on whatever the chief has determined isn't going to be collected. But I think it's based about 18 months back.
Okay. All right, pleasure. And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discuss letter from the highway surveyor with regards to Quanapod Road. And actually, both Carlton and Chuck are here to talk about that. So Chuck?
Yep. Quanapod Road, coming out of New Bedford, oh, Chipaway Road, coming out of New Bedford, making the swing onto, this would be East Chipaway Road here. No, I'm sorry. East Chipaway Road here, coming out of New Bedford. Bob Ficquet, Big Will, has asked me numerous times to put a no-parking sign in this area. What's happening is he's coming up here, trying to make that swing.
That little house on the, that house on the corner? It's kind of set up in the corner?
Yes. All that blacktop that's in the front there is owned by the town. There's a 60-foot, layout of the road here, a 60-foot. What we've run into is, we put the sign up. The owner of the house, who lives in Lakeville, doesn't want the sign yet, comes down, ripped the sign out, throws it in the woods. We go down, the very next day, we reinstall the sign. The very next day, we're back in the woods. So we want to make this officially, for me to put a no-parking sign in, it really doesn't hold any weight until you people decide that can make that into a parking zone. So we're basically wanting a no-parking zone from West Gate Lane all the way to the corner of Chipaway Road.
Does he have a little driveway there? Is that why, is that why people park?
All this here, this whole area?
Yeah.
Is off-street parking. They...
They're right here.
They are parking there, just out of spite. And when Big Will or any other tractor-trailer tries to make that swing, especially Bob, who's one of the big wreckers with the tractor-trailer, he needs all the room in the world to make that swing. And what he's found is, when they're cast parked here, he's causing major problems here. He's asked me, we've had signs there in the past, and they've gone missing. The last month or so, we played a game where we put, reinstalled it three times. And the very next day, two days later, it's been ripped out. Police department's aware, they've already been somewhat tracking it. We're just looking to make that an official no-parking zone.
So can, do you guys...
I got a report to make. Ally, I think, took a call from the owner of that house. As is often the case, I don't think it was a pleasant phone call, but when I talked to him, it wouldn't melt in his mouth. His story is, is that his tenants have plenty of off-street parking. It's when they have guess that it's going to be a problem. They park on both sides of the house and in the front. He has tenants on the second floor of the house and first floor. He does it as a traktor tool. He lives in Lakeville. So this is an income property then.
Right.
I have a question. Are we going to enforce it?
Well, you'd have to promulgate a regulation and vote on it. I believe it'd have to be advertised. And then signs would be placed up there. And once that's done, if there's a complaint, a vehicle can be ticketed, or a patrol happens by and observes a violation, vehicle can be ticketed.
So making a motion tonight, we might make it a no-parking area?
Well, you're going to need a description, you know?
Yeah, we have one. West side between Chipaway Road and West Gate Lane.
Okay.
Is that sufficient?
Probably.
So your offices will...
If the signs are posted up there, yeah.
You seem somewhat apprehensive. It's not like usual.
Usually, it's a little more formal than that.
Okay.
You know, beginning at a point at the intersection of blah, 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 then it's running, you know, westerly, 100 feet more or less, ending at a point at the intersection of such and such, you know?
All right, so why don't we put this on for the next agenda once we get all the specifics? Okay, so it passes the muster test. But I also think that you should reach out to them and tell them that we will make this a no-parking zone and that the board is going to take that up at our next meeting.
Okay. October 5th. Will we have, you think we'll have a document by then that we can, John, Andrew's on?
I'll have it tomorrow.
Perfect, sorry.
She's got time to go out there and do the maintenance, that's all.
I know exactly where you're aiming, so...
Once you put it together, get it, the jacket.
All right. But I think that this guy needs to be warned that this is happening, and...
I know the TJ's done some work on it. And like I said, we just want to make it official.
Yeah.
So we've got something to stand on.
Well, I don't want somebody to come back and say, well, this wasn't the right way. So let's just make sure we do it.
My guys are getting a little tired of digging this in.
You know, I don't mind, I don't mind taking action tonight if we know that it's going to be written the proper way.
People better off, we'll get the measurements like Carlton's, and we'll get it north by east by south. Make everything happen.
All right. And then you have a final report for Amanda Road.
I do. On Amanda Road, which we paved originally, we were looking to spend $89,620.90, and the project came in at $75,349.63. So each page needs the signature, yeah, and the signature, yeah.
All right. I can take a motion to sign the Chapter 95 final report in the amount of $75,349.63.
So be it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chuck, you have a Wednesday morning. Leave the bus.
Okay. While we're here, I don't know where it is on your agenda, the stop signs?
Yeah, let's do that. That's actually two more down, but let's do that one. Discuss letter from police chief Carlton Abbott regarding stop signs in Heaven Heights. And I think you were part of this too, right? Who starts?
I'll stop, just I'm the cynical one. Subdivision's been there for 65 years and never had any stop signs. Resident called me up, tore me, tore my head right off. Can't understand how you can have roads without stop signs. I said, well, I've been there for 65 years, never had an issue. We claim there's more people. Went to the door, there's no more people, there's no more houses. I think police department came up with eight stop signs. I went through there this weekend, I came up, if you're going to do it, I came up with 14. Should be, wherever a road hits one of the main roads, should be a stop sign. So there's no stop signs at Gerard and Chavino where they intersect with County, which I would think is way more. But pretty much every subdivision in town doesn't have stop signs at every intersection. And as road commission is, obviously, if you guys want stop signs, we'll have them up tomorrow.
You've had one complaint?
No, we've had, what, TJ, two accidents in the last six months, three months?
Two accidents, one in July, one in September. Very beginning of September. Significant...
That was a bad one, too.
Significant damage to both of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. The second one had significant injury to it. Well, significantly.
You drew value to having 14?
Well, I think in both cases, people did not, that did not live in the neighborhood or driving through. And they can't determine who has the right of way. It's unclear. So I think we should install stop signs.
14, or should we put eight?
Well, I'd have to follow Chuck's lead if he's identified all of those. The only thing I would point out is, where the streets intersect with the state highway, I think Mass Highway has to approve those particular stop signs. We can't.
This county road is still state highway, right?
Over down in Walltown. Looking at about 12 hundred miles from the terrace.
Well, I mean, if the police department is saying we need them...
If I'm a, I'm glad we can...
Okay, motion made to install 12 stop signs.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I also would like the town administrative to talk to Mass Highway and get the other two stop signs.
What are the intersecting streets again?
You're going to look at, you're going to be Gerard at County and Chavino at County. Those are the only two ways in there. And then every intersection, Andre Avenue, both ends, Denise Avenue, you'd have three stop signs. Paul Avenue, you'd have four stop signs. Four stop signs. Lucy Avenue, you'd have three stop signs.
Okay, well, we're talking stop signs. I'd like, I've been asking for four and a half years for a stop sign at the corner of Dr. Braden Road as you're coming in from Rochester towards Free Town, towards Roundsville Drive.
Yeah, that's the main road, though. The warrants under the municipal side guidelines...
Somebody is going to get hurt. Look, I've been almost hit twice in the last month at that intersection. Because they're coming from Rochester, and they're coming around... Because they're coming from Rochester and they're coming around the left-hand bend to stay on Dr. Brayley Road and you cannot see them, and most of the time they're on the wrong side of the road. I've been talking about this for four and a half years. And every time I talk about it, I get, well, we've looked at it and there's no need of a stop sign there. Well, certainly, there's more of a need for a stop sign there than a stop sign in a development like this. So how do we get one?
Well, if the board wants to vote to erect a stop sign there, I guess it can. Usually you, you follow the, uh, the manual for warrants to determine whether one.
We'll put it on for the next.
Okay.
Okay, so then no one can ever say, oh, it wasn't on the agenda, da, 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 da.
Okay.
So on the next agenda, can you put, um, the stop sign, the little Paul's talking about? Cause I have no idea what you're talking about.
What's the intersection, bro? Dr. Brayley Road and Roundsville Drive. There's one on Roundsville into Dr. Brayley, but it's a ninety-degree bend. And I'm sure all the officers here know that intersection.
Yeah.
And when they come around the corner to stay on Roundsville Drive, they're, they're just flying.
Yeah.
And if they had something to stop, actually, it's right in front of Sergeant Magnet's house.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I don't care what side it's on, it could be on the Dr. Brayley side heading north. Doesn't matter to me, but there's gotta be a stop sign. Because they just come around there and most of the time, you gotta slam on your brakes.
You all set, Chuck? Everything else going well?
I'll make streets three weeks ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
Uh, bridge is, uh, we poured a footing on Friday for the retained wall, so that's probably on schedule. Bridge Hill Road Project finished up this morning, they put it in the calendar.
Will you have the prices on the other two bridges for a fall town meeting?
I actually have that at the location on my desk, and I just, I thought I'd be.
I know.
Is it gonna scare us?
Um, they gave us options.
Okay, good.
To do the right way, I think Kim Armstrong from G P I told me one point seven.
For everything?
Of the two, yes.
That's what I figured, I figured it'd be one and a half.
But I'll get the information now and, and you can email to you guys, at least you'll have it.
And we'll have it for the warrant, so that'll be perfect. Thank you so much.
Do you have to, what about this one here? Does he have to be here?
I have no idea what this is. I, I don't know.
What's the matter, Charlie?
Well, I see something that says, discuss, approve ambulance, dump truck, and F-250 truck.
I don't know what.
I don't know what it is.
Do you know why it's here?
That's the lease agreements.
Oh, the continued leases?
No, these are brand-new leases for the items that you approved for this year's budget.
So you just want us to sign the lease?
Alright, this is the stuff that was approved by.
To sign the lease documents.
Stuff that was approved by the town meeting.
We don't have to approve, it's already been approved. So it should, it just should say, sign lease.
Okay.
Okay. It got me all, you don't even need to sign them, the camera officer already signed them, so you just need to approve the contractual part of it. Okay. Okay. You're good. Sayonara, you can go.
Don't forget the bus.
Drink some water.
Put anything in it?
No.
Okay.
Your truck's still running. I don't think it shut it off.
Approved reserve fund transfer request for twenty-nine hundred dollars for parks budget.
Yeah.
As submitted by town administrator.
The, uh, the fence was damaged by a fallen tree, up behind the van's damaged, no.
Okay, I get the reason why, but do we, we don't have a parks budget, do we?
That's the problem.
Yeah, that's what I, uh, thank you, cause I really thought that, that was disbanded. We don't have a parks budget, so.
I'm not sure then how you can fix the fence.
How can, can we fix the fence out of, um, the money that was set aside for, um, improvements to town-owned property?
It doesn't say improvements, it, I mean, it says buildings and vehicles. It doesn't say anything about.
Can we amend that article on town meeting floor to include that verbiage?
Yeah, you certainly could, if you wanna wait an, until town meeting.
So we'll fix that. Also, can I make a recommendation, um, and hear me out? If you weren't here, everybody would've been like, shh, right? Cause I would've said, I don't think we have a, a parks, and somebody else would've said, oh, I think we do, and na, 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 na. So from now on, can we have, before the requests come to us, can we just have you check, like, check the box that you've looked it over? And not that you agree or disagree, but you've checked it over, these are the line item account, everything's all set, before it comes to us.
Okay, that, I did.
Okay.
And that's why it was here, because one option would be to pre.
Alright, can you just put your notes somewhere in there, so when we're looking at them, we know?
Oh, okay.
Okay? Alright.
What's the options, anyway?
Oh, well, I think you basically came up with them. You could fund this through a reserve fund in order to have a parks department budget, which could be used to maintain the parks in town.
Put an article to change the wording of.
Yeah, you could definitely.
Or fund it at the special town meeting.
Yeah, you could fund this at the special town meeting through a parks appropriation, or you could amend, um, your article to say, you know, all town, you know, uh, town buildings, land, parks, whatever.
Right, town and property, that's what we'll say. We'll amend that article to just make it simple and wider.
That works, too.
Okay. Perfect. I'm good with that. So Ally, can we do that?
Ally's get the first article.
Ally, can we do that, okay? Alright, alright, so ambulance, dump truck, and F-250. You wanna continue?
I was just, basically, I'm here to find out when town meeting is. Is that soon on the agenda, or?
You wanna ask somebody that, somebody that knows? We haven't said it yet.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the agenda, it's soon.
Okay.
Okay. Jack, Ally, somebody wanna talk to us about the payment schedule and the lease agreements for these ambulance, dump truck, and F-250 truck?
You want it, or you signed all the documents, or?
Yeah. Well, are you gonna approve them, is that, or you wanna put them on the town meeting as well?
Um, okay, we already voted on them at town meeting, so now we just need to sign, I believe this is what we're supposed to be doing, signing the lease.
Well, Jack already signed all the documents.
So why is this on the agenda? Can we just, let's get to the bottom line, cause it's not to really bear on me.
We just need to agree that, that, uh, for all of the, the payment schedules, that's all you need to do. It has to be on an agenda for you to agree to pay all of these.
Well, where are they, you have them in front of us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're right, all three of them, right on your packet. All of three schedules.
Alright, we need to, like.
Hold on, let me find them.
Communicate better, cause this isn't working right now. Why not? Cause it's not.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, we have a.
Okay, here we go.
Exhibit payment schedule for B for.
I passed a lot of it.
Dump truck. Alright. Chuck's dump truck, F-450, um, the payment amount, first payment number is twenty-one, six fifty, and then payment amounts are about twenty to twenty-one per year. Wanna see it?
Where do you see this, this dump truck?
She wrote it at the bottom.
Oh, no wonder, it's not on here.
Right.
Oh, yeah, there it is, okay.
Um, and then the second one is the payment schedule for the F-250 truck. Um, they range from twelve thousand to eleven thousand, um, for three years. And then, um, the ambulance payments range from fifty-six, two fifty, to almost sixty thousand dollars for four years.
Excuse me.
Yeah, here you go.
Kim?
Yep.
These were approved at the town meeting in the budget, right?
The first year lease was approved, the lease payment was approved. Um, uh, Chief Sylvia was the one who negotiated with All-American, um, got a great interest rate, I believe it's like two point nine seven. So we have the first payment due, um, upon delivery of the vehicle, so there's no interest in the first year. So overall, you'll be saving money on what we projected for those three vehicles.
This is stuff that we, we approved at the annual town meeting.
Understood, but this is a contract, and by bylaw, you need to approve the contract.
Okay, but Jack already signed it, right?
Okay, but you're the selectman, and by bylaw, you need to ratify the contract. That's why you're signing them.
It's ever been presented like this, so that's why I'm like, okay.
That's why I'm surprised, because I haven't even seen, seen the contract, but you already signed it, so.
I signed it as a part of it anyways, right?
I make the motion, no, you can make the motion.
I'll make the motion, I make the motion to.
Sign the lease agreements for the ambulance, the dump truck, and the F-250 truck.
Second.
No, you make the motion.
I made the motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay. I, I don't know, guys, here. Sign proclamation for Constitution Week, September seventeenth, twenty, uh, twenty, to the twenty-third, which a pleasure.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve board of selectmen's minutes from May eighteenth, twenty fifteen. The month of June, the month of July, and the month of August.
They looked up, keep with me when I, so, I make a motion to approve.
All those in, uh, I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we already did that one. Um, sign mutual police aid agreement between Free Town and southeastern Massachusetts communities, as submitted by Police Chief Carlton Abbott. Carlton?
Now, there's approximately thirty signatories to the agreement, including, uh, virtually every contiguous community except Berkeley. This allows us plenary authority while offices are on duty in those communities. For example, a couple of years ago, we had two officers present at the courthouse when they observed one person trying to stab another person. In those circumstances, they were merely civilians. With this mutual aid agreement, they would act as police officers and have full authority. Additionally, if one of our officers was, uh, driving through Lakeville, for example, and saw somebody breaking into, uh, the school, our officers who were on duty would have the authority to make an arrest as police officers within that community. Our officers are present in an emergency room in one of our signatory communities, they can take action as police officers. Once they take action, the, uh, the police department from the community in which the event occurred will arrive and then the, uh, the person arrested will be brought to that station and our officers will assist in the reports. Uh, conversely, if a, an officer from a signatory community who's on duty and is in our community and witnesses a crime or other, uh, type of event that requires police intervention, then that officer can take immediate action, uh, with all the full authority of a Free Town police officer. So it's, uh, it's quite a, quite an agreement.
Motion made to approve mutual aid agreement.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now discuss the town meeting date and open and close the warrant articles. Let me just look at my calendar here for a second. So if we open the warrant articles tonight, have them closed by next Friday? Ally, is that what you're thinking?
Next Friday?
By the twenty-fifth?
More when the town meeting date.
So, alright, so hear us out, so if we open them tonight and we close them by next Friday, not the twenty-fifth, the second.
Second, oh, that makes more, okay.
We review them at our October meeting.
October fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
So town meeting date is November second, you said?
No, I didn't, I didn't see that.
Oh, okay. I just, I just see it second.
No. I said that the warrant articles would be due back October second. Yeah. And then we, we could review them at our meeting.
On the fifth, okay.
Correct, on the fifth.
Can they be due by ten o'clock on the second, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Review them on the fifth, and Mark Rich can have them for four days.
Mm-hmm.
Will that be enough time?
Yep. When's the town meeting?
And then we can have our final, well, I'm just trying to fi- figure all this out, we can have our final approval on the ninth.
Nineteenth. The ninth?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you mean have a meeting on the ninth?
Yeah, just to approve those.
For the final warrant?
For the final warrant.
Will, will Rich have them back to us by then?
If I get him them on the sixth.
Okay.
That'll give him four days.
So we could have town meeting on the twenty-sixth? Hello?
Uh, how about on the second? November second. Is that a problem, November second?
It's a week later.
Yeah, and it's also a night that we have a meeting scheduled.
I know, but the thing is, is that if we don't get the town meeting done and there's a problem, we're not gonna get our tax bills out and we're not gonna be able to set the rate.
Yeah, but we don't need to do it in October. Let's do, no, I'd rather do it on the second. Give us a little bit more breathing room.
I don't mind us breathing, I just know that the downstairs is gonna have a problem getting the bills out if we wait.
We know, Kim, when do they need, uh, when does she have, when do they need, uh, the information from us to get the bills out? I mean, December, right at the beginning of December.
Um, they need two weeks in order to turn around the bills, so, and the bills have to be out before December thirty-first.
Forty-seven, thirty-first, so.
Right. However, you know, as you're probably aware, there've been a number of retirements at D O R, there is no director of accounts. I'm not exactly sure how they're going to set any tax rates at this point. Um, we still do not have a representative from the Bureau of Accounts. I have spoke with Karen Mello, they still have their, um, you know, Bureau of Assessing person. That person did not retire, so that's good, but that's only one piece of getting the recap approved, so.
So you think that we'll be like in a waiting line, so?
Oh, yeah, and we're definitely not at the top of the list, because we went through our recertification for values last year, so this is an interim year. So I'll be honest with you, I just don't wanna see it any later than the very first week of November, so.
I'd rather have more room.
Twenty-sixth?
I'd rather have more room to play with.
Okay.
Remember, this is a special town meeting and, and departments need to be aware that this is not to supplement budgets. This is more of a wording kind of thing, and the only, the only budgets that we talked about fixing were those that didn't get approved for, um, cost of living increases, um, by, the bylaw people, so those are really a. Everybody got everything they wanted out of their budget, so nobody should be coming back to supplement their budgets. So really, this is strictly, should be strictly zoning and warrant, uh, wording sort of articles.
If you do it on the twenty-sixth, though, my warrant has to be posted on it on the ninth. I'm just warning you, cause it can't be posted on the twelfth, because that's four days' time.
Alright, so.
You might wanna make it on the twenty-seventh.
Alright.
Cause then my warrant would have to be posted on the thirteenth.
So I have a meeting on the twenty-seventh?
Have the, the special town meeting on the twenty-seventh. That's a Tuesday, is that a problem for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not that Tuesday.
Alright. And then you know what, on the second, we will have to have a meeting.
Alright.
Okay?
I mean, we can still have the, you can still have a meeting on the ninth, and I can post it early, but.
Yeah, that's fine, but I'm just saying, like, we won't have to have a, a selectmen's meeting on the second of November if we have that.
Well, we still have to have a classification hearing for Karen to set the.
Okay.
If there's gonna be a tax.
We need to have the second.
There'll be a tax issue.
Yeah. Alright, so that's, that's our town meeting, the twenty-seventh. This is gonna be.
You're not going to a football game on the second, are you?
No.
You're gonna send it away.
You want me to? Alright. That's what you were waiting for.
Yep.
So I'll make, uh, entertain a motion to open the warrant articles and have them closed on, um, by ten o'clock, ten o'clock.
Ten AM, ten AM on the ninth.
On the ninth.
Sure means.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Town administrator's report.
Yes.
We already did American.
I'd like the boards permission to call a meeting of the building committee members and convene their first meeting. While we do not currently have the financial resources to pay the debt service and loan to build or rehab and, uh, uh, and, and the building options chosen, if Amazon, American, and Churchill and Banks Developments progress the way. If Amazon, American, and Churchill and Banks developments progress the way they're expected to, we will be in a position to move forward in three to five years with newer rehab buildings depending on our choice. An allocation of a portion of those new revenues to this purpose. Now is the time to begin the planning and decision-making with regard to the options that we have, and so, we are ready to begin... So, we're ready to begin the design selection process and design the buildings when funds become available. What do you think?
It sounds good to me.
Too early.
When is it not going to be too early, do you think?
I'll tell you what I thought, too early.
Yeah.
I'm not going to make any motion on that.
Okay. Trash and recycling cost options. I know you're aware that our trash disposal costs will be escalating with the end of our contract with CMAS on September first. What you may not know is that we're now being charged for our recyclables. New Bedford Waste, the company Peter Borges is delivering residential recyclables to... Has been taking them without charging... Without charge, because they had a market in Asian countries. That company is Waste... New Bedford Waste. And because those outlets are drying up, are having difficulties with their... Their economies, there's no longer... They're no longer buying materials, and therefore, New Bedford Waste has got to find a new place to put them, and they're charging. We're paying thirty dollars a ton to New Bedford Waste to take our recyclables.
When did that start, Jack?
About a month ago, Ally? Think about a month or two ago.
How are we paying for it?
We're... Well, we're going to have that... You're going to see that on the supplemental budget in the special town meeting, I'm sure.
How much are you estimating?
We're not... We're not doing... Strategy-wise, we're not doing a lot of recyclables in and on a daily basis. But I'll have to sit down with Kevin and figure that out. Our CMAS contract expires September first of next year. We have three options going forward. Attached, you will find a summary of the proposals from CMAS, New Bedford Waste, and the Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge Disposal District, better known to you all as Crepo Hill Landfill. I've also attached some of the correspondence I've had with each of these groups. Please review it and be prepared to discuss it at the meeting. We're currently paying CMAS twenty-six dollars and forty-seven dollars per ton. So, fifty-nine or sixty...
Twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents per ton.
That's correct. So, fifty-nine dollars or sixty dollars with a two percent or a two and a half percent annual increase will be a big difference. So, you've got all those proposals and the schedule that I put together on the trash disposal options. CMAS will run over a ten-year period, starting with sixty dollars a ton in the first year, up to a two and a half percent escalator to seventy-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge Disposal District, Crepo Hill. They don't specify what the annual increase might be, it's going to be variable depending on their costs. But they've given us a year and ten months at sixty dollars a ton before they start increasing it. And you can see the increase is running to seventy-one dollars and seventy cents in year ten, the last two months of year eleven, actually. New Bedford Waste starts out at fifty-nine dollars, but they have a two and a half percent escalator, and that rents to seventy-three dollars, sixty-nine cents in year ten. New Bedford Waste will also commit to continuing to take our recyclables at thirty dollars a ton. I don't think you want to make that part of the deal and lock yourself into a cost for ten years. So, I recommend against that. But if you want to spend some time, maybe have a...
Aren't we missing somebody here? Aren't we missing the new company down there?
That's the new company.
Which one, New Bedford Waste? That's what it's called?
Yes, it is, well. They call themselves the... They're New Bedford Waste. The sign of that building says zero waste.
Wait, it's not... It's the same company?
Well, I don't know if we come to write up the contract whether or not it'll be a different LLC, but it's... This is New Bedford Waste. New Bedford Waste is developing that site.
Okay. I thought that company was supposed to be much, much cheaper. Never looked at it.
A dollar?
None, none.
Okay.
Want to give it some thought?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, I got a few other items. Hathaway Park Playground. We've reached the top of the mountain and now have over sixty-five thousand dollars in kitty for the project. The total cost with the company that we've been working with for years is sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and seventy... Seventy-five cents. And so, we might even get to the point where we can buy a few benches for the mothers and fathers to sit on while they're sitting on a blanket on the ground. But we're having a little trouble with the procurement process. And I sent a letter to town council asking for some advice.
Okay.
And I'll report to you about that one now when I give a response from there.
All right, sounds good, thanks, Jack. Is that it?
No.
Oh.
The water agreement. You've seen a response from... From the city to the... A response from the city on the proposal that we sent to them.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's pretty clear, or should be clear, that when they suggest that town council contact their attorney, there's... They're not really interested in it.
Well, whoa, okay, you can say that, but really, the letter came from our attorney, too, so...
What did?
The letter.
Which one?
The letter that we sent them, so it's like...
Well, that's true.
Yeah, right, so now, we sent them a letter from our attorney, and now, they're saying, okay, well, if you want to get... Basically, the way I read it was, if you want to get the attorneys involved, then your attorney can talk to our attorney.
Okay. I think that's a bright idea, don't you? Put them in touch with one another?
Excellent idea.
I think that, right now, the attorneys need to come to an agreement, because really, no one's getting anywhere.
Yeah, that's correct. All right, we'll take care of that.
What have we taken care of?
Did I put the attorneys in touch with them?
Our attorneys?
Yeah, Mark, and... Mark Rich can talk to Joe Masey.
Right, and they were in on the meeting, the joint meeting we had with the warrant department, so they knew where we stand.
Exactly.
Okay.
It would be Mark and Jonathan Summers.
Right.
Okay. I think this is a separate item on the agenda, but if you wanted to talk about treasurer collector options.
Yep.
Is that next up? Can we go to that?
You can go to it as part of your town administrator's report.
All right. I've been in touch with a number of different people in an attempt to find someone that might be interested in acting as an interim treasurer collector for a period of time. And...
Bless you.
Bless you.
I've talked to a few potential candidates, some of whom were not interested in taking it on. Some who wanted a hundred dollars an hour. That conversation didn't last too long. And I talked to... I sent a letter off to all the town administrators on the twenty-third this week. We were having lunch together, so I got a chance to talk to thirteen of them. And I've also spoken to treasurer collector in Swansea, who put me in touch with Mike Hanlon, the executive director of the Massachusetts Treasurer Collectors Association. And they've agreed to put this short ad, if you will, in their... On their website.
Okay.
And to send it to all their members in a listserv, they have a listserv, to share it with them. So, we ought to get some response from that. It reads, "The town in Free Town is looking for a retired treasurer collector. Would be interested in working for the town as the interim treasurer collector, part-time, not to exceed nine hundred and sixty hours a year. If you're interested, that'd be about twenty hours a week." Most of them seem to be more interested in nineteen hours on the line, but that apparently makes a difference, it's over. And if you're interested, please contact me at our number.
Okay.
So, thanks to Beth Leonardo, Swansea's treasurer collector, for helping to arrange for that.
All right, Paul, you're up.
Okay. Personnel board. Ally Galls. We have a document here to appoint Ally Galls to cultural council for a term that will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ally to the cultural council.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a... Wait, yeah.
Yeah, library planning committee.
Yeah, where's the document? We also have another document to appoint. Paula Rose as a member of the library planning committee, her term will expire June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll make a motion to appoint Paula to the library planning committee.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Change of status form for Cara Pigeon, it was a mistake made when we had approved the prior one. It was a mistake in her hourly rate, because she is... She has education incentive, and it was not reflected in the employment change. So, this is a change of status effective for Cara Pigeon to correct the rate of pay to twenty-five forty an hour.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have chief, you're on next, I guess, a change of status form for Sergeant... Senior Sergeant Arthur Ashley.
Yeah, I'd like to withdraw that at this time. I thought we had an understanding with the police union, but apparently, they have... Still have some concerns and would like to talk to the board and myself further regarding that.
When?
One possibility they indicated was to try to talk to you on Wednesday, aside from the negotiations.
Which I have an issue with, I'm sorry. I just got notice of this today. I have a mammogram that afternoon at four-thirty, so either it's... Just Paul, because Lee's away.
No, casual meeting.
Or we're going to have to...
I'm not going to attend it by myself.
I can do it another day earlier than our next date, like, it doesn't have to be our next date, but I just found out about this, so...
So, we're going to have to scrub the meeting for Wednesday?
I think so. I mean...
I mean, I'm not going to go by myself.
So, we... If you guys come up with another date that's not as far off as the next one, that's fine with me. Just let me know when it is, all right? And I'll make sure that I clear everything to go, even if it has to be during the day.
We'll communicate that with the team.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay, the other... Next thing on the agenda is a letter from the planning board. We had recently appointed Debbie Robbins as a full-time member of the planning board, and she was an alternate member. And we need an alternate member. We have had a letter of interest from a local resident, Antonio DeMello. And the planning board reviewed his letter, and the planning board is making a recommendation to the board of selectmen. It's a joint decision between the board of selectmen and the planning board. They voted unanimously to appoint Mr. DeMello and request that we appoint Mr. DeMello as the alternate member.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's see. New business, it's all yours again.
No, discuss uniforms with town hall employees.
Come on, just that one. What's the status of that?
What's this... Is it this Friday or Monday that they're getting fitted?
I think it's outside Friday.
Friday. Again, three of them are getting fitted by our existing company on Friday.
So, everybody will be wearing...
They will be delivered... Their uniforms will be delivered to Highway Barn. They'll have to go there to pick up their uniforms, or they go somewhere.
Okay.
They had raised that as an issue. We had a price that was a few dollars cheaper even from another company, but the board made it clear that you wanted uniformity in the uniform and the company. So, we're back to square one, they're being fitted this week.
Okay.
All right, that was yours.
Dates for upcoming board of selectmen's meeting, October fifth, October nineteenth, November second, November sixteenth, November thirtieth, December fourteenth, and December twenty-eighth. Okay.
Try a chance at that one.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
And we got to change to November second, right?
We're going to not meet on the second, and we're going to meet on ten twenty-seven.
Ten twenty-seven. Okay.
Under old business, can we just add stop signs, water agreement, treasurer collector? Our treasurer's position is already there, but... Okay. Entertain... Are we going into executive session?
Yes, I make a motion to go with the executive session for deployment of police personnel with the caveat of coming back to open session.
And one of them, I put out on there. I don't know. Okay.
And strategy for... Oh, yes, and discuss the strategy for reflect the bargaining of the nine-one-one signal operators you need in the police unit, if an opening may be... Or may have been detrimental to the bargaining or litigation position of public body.
All right, you made that motion?
Yes.
I'll second. Mr. Saneck?
Yes.
Mrs. Pacheco? Yes. Okay.
Yes.
Oh, this is wonderful. A close-up of both of us.
Thanks.
Better-looking person is on my right. I make a...
Jack?
No, you. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lynn.